We had to move it on. We've got one more question before the break, which I'd like to ask all the candidates to answer as briefly as possible. But I'm also going to ask George to pick out his colour first, because he got his colour first last time, at least it improved, it wasn't me. You can't win, can you? The question for George is: How do you view your term as councillor? And what would you like to do in the future? And the question for the other three is: What would you do differently from previous councillors? George?
Well, first and foremost, as it's like to say, we don't run the council. Friends with a Labour group run the city council, and we, the Lib Dems, are in opposition. The main advantages have been a matter of a political party instead of being a independent councillor. A independent councillor cannot attend all the subcommittees and argue your rights. Within a political party, we are able to attend all the committees. We share information amongst ourselves, and each and every one of us brings different skills into the equation, and we help one another. As a political group, we have a manifesto, and everyone of us, including our board, knows where we start. The topics of our manifesto, I think, are the main entries. Our aim is for cleaner, cleaner and fair Cambridge. Cleaner, it can mean a lot of things. We expect our students in Queeneydies to be very clean, and I am one of the guys who constantly form the city council to come out with the broom and clear the roads. And also, we're starting to clean up them alleyways, because usually the alleyways are full of bottles and syringes and everything else. And cleaner, we also mean cleaner air in our community. We also look for a cleaner place to live. Following David Attenborough's words, time is running out for our planet. We took a motion to full council declaring a climate emergency in Cambridge. We were able to persuade the leading group, and we all ordered unanimously that we have an emergency and we need to do something about it if we want to have the wonderful city of Cambridge. We also like to think that we are a fair party. Last year, the Labour group introduced charges, short mobility charges. The most vulnerable of our society, who are trucking home every day, and they go once a week or so to the Grafton Centre or to the city centre, they were being charged £50 membership of £7 every time they need to use a wheelchair or a bike to go around the shops. We asked the Labour people, how much money are you trying to save? They said £50,000. And I sat at the chair of the mayor, and I said to them, can we please cancel the fireworks in the summertime, which cost £50,000, and give that money to the poor people? And they haven't agreed to that one. However, our party, together with all our residents, we managed to get together over thousands of signatures and present everything to the council. We had a round of huge debates, and I'm pleased to announce that those charges have now been removed. And all our disabled people and the most vulnerable people of our society can enjoy those services for free. That's why I call fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. So, for the other three, what would you do differently from previous councillors? If we can restrict ourselves to two minutes each, we can just about finish by the clock for the break. So, Sam?
Okay. Do you know this quote? Never doubt that a small group of committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, that is all that ever has done. George just outlined some of the process-related disadvantages, if you like, of standing as an independent. But am I downhearted? No, I'm not. I'm thoroughly enthused about standing as an independent, because I genuinely believe that it will open up opportunities and possibilities that don't exist when we're constrained by tribal politics. I think we can build inquiry leaders in genuinely inclusive approach to solving our problems. And there's lots of ways you can do that. So, for example, South Cans District Council has supported 16 of its villages to engage with what's called neighbourhood planning. Cambridge City Council has one scheme going through at the moment. And neighbourhood planning may not be an appropriate route for Queeneydies to go down, but I'd at least like us to investigate it and see if there are merits. Similarly, South Cans District Council has nominated eight villages to participate in something called village design statements, which set out to try and capture the essence of what makes those places special, and make sure that whatever development goes on doesn't compromise that quality. Now, South Cans District Council and Cambridge City Council are now joining planning services. It's going to be a one-shared service. I'm going to be really interested to see whether that kind of innovative thinking that South Cans communities have enjoyed can be deployed in the city. And if it can, why not? I'd like to avoid having conversations like the one I've had in the last 24 hours, where a council officer has asked me, sort of more or less off the cuff, for my response to some money that's come up for funding a project, and where do I think it should be spent? She's asked other people as well, and she's asked me that in my capacity as community floor or chair. That doesn't quite seem right to me. It seems like an odd process. Surely, the process should be that we, as a community, crowdsource the things that we want money spending on, and then when some money becomes available, we don't have to horse-trade about where it goes. We know where it's going. We have our list established. And there's also a whole kind of professional literature practice around what's called participatory planning. Believe it or not, in other places in the country and other countries in the world, there are ways citizens can have their views respected in the planning process in a way which is completely alien to anything we've seen in Queeneydies or indeed in Cambridge City. So, those are some of the things that I would want to explore and see if we could do differently. I think we've got a really good example, sorry, Chris. I think we've got a really good example in Trupington of Katie Thorber, the Labour councillor, who was elected last year. She's an architect. She brings her professional knowledge to planning issues. And from the outside, she looks like she's made a fantastic difference to the planning committee's ability to function and scrutinise. I would hope I could contribute on that level. And then, really... I don't like being rolled over. I think we need a seat at the table. We need our voices heard. And in order for that to happen, we have to turn up to the table in the first place. I've spent a lot of time in the last three years attending meetings. My long-suffering husband, sitting at the back, can confirm to you over the interval quite how much of my time I've spent attending those meetings. But you have to be there. I asked a question at the GCPD Board in March, sat through the rest of the meeting, and saw two councillors from Hockington change the decision the officers had recommended because they turned up and spoke on behalf of their residents. So, those are some of the things we'll do differently. Sorry for overrunning.
Manus, what would you do differently from previous councillors?
What I would try to do differently is a few things. To start with, Dr. Tilly. Well, I need to hear you now. Drug peddling, you must have heard of this. Recently, many Cambridge schools are targeted by drug peddlers. The drug dealers from London, they have selectively targeted a few important schools in Cambridge, namely the Upper West Netherholt School in my ward. And we need to save our children. We need to save our future generations. It's very important for parents with young children to understand how drug peddlers are working. And police are trying to catch them, but it's not that easy. They have a secret code, secret passwords, and it's becoming extremely difficult. If I'm elected, I will try to work with the community, with the school, and also with the police to see if I can curb that drug peddling business. Next is community centres. As I said, you know, I can't think of a world without the community centre. And I don't understand why it has taken so long for a city councillor to deliver a community centre, which is unheard of in other boroughs. If I'm elected, and if this is not come up quickly, that will be one of my priorities. Apprenticeship. I'm a businessman. I believe employment should be generated. I believe people should develop their skill. If I'm elected, I will introduce an apprenticeship hub in Queeneydies to produce homegrown young entrepreneurs in Cambridge. And I will provide that service from my side, free as many hours as it needs. And it is very important that our young children, when they grow up, they become, you know, self-sufficient. They don't have to go and look for jobs all the time. They can be self-employed if they have skill. Burglaries, as I said, burglaries, you know, a lot of residents are very scared. When it happens to your house, you understand how the pain is. It is extremely painful to lose overnight the lot of valuables you possessed all period of time. And a lot of things are emotional to you as well. And I'm working relentlessly with the community and police to stop burglaries. I don't think the city councillors have focused enough attention to that areas. They must have done something, but the result is not showing. Potholes, I know some of the councillors will be unhappy. Potholes in several parts of Queeneydies is a big issue. It remains unrepaired for months. Just a week before election, you'll find some of the potholes are gone. Why does it have to be one week before election? Can it not be done a month before? Can it not be done three months before? Do we have to suffer all the time for big potholes? Now, if you ask this question, they will say, oh, it's Conservative-run county council. Then, why do we have a county councillor in Queeneydies from Liddon? What is the county councillor's responsibility? You can't just blame all the time. If some is strong, it's Conservative's fault. If some is not setting early, it's Labour's fault. It doesn't work like that. You have a Liddon county councillor in Queeneydies to solve our residents' problem. You can't say, oh, it's a Conservative issue. This is absurd. I don't believe in that. If I'm elected, I will work throughout the year, whoever is in council, doesn't matter. As a councillor, I will work throughout the year, try my best to repair potholes wherever it is required. Speeding is the last issue. I haven't gone there far. Speeding. You know, speeding in Mowbray Road, Queeneydies Way, Fennan Road, Knightville Avenue, it's become a serious hazard for children to cross roads, older people and pedestrians. And I don't think, you know, the city councillors are doing enough to restrict the speeding. Just a sign is not good enough. You put a 20 sign, people just, you know, go over it all the time. I think we need to have further measures to discourage people to speed on these roads where we have serious hazard. And with that, I will conclude. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And finally, Dan.
So, at first, you couldn't hear me. I don't know if you can now see me to get you locked off in here. Right, so it's an interesting question, because it's reflecting on previous councillors' reports as well as what I think I could do differently. But I just want to pick up just one thing Manus said there. I personally have a great respect for councillor Taylor. We are from different parties, which means sometimes you and she would argue with each other, but she is incredibly hardworking. And just to point out, actually, national cuts have been absolutely horrific in the last, well, nine years. We've seen some slashing to services at county council level and, of course, at city council level. In many ways, what the councillors are trying to do is trying to stop the impact of those cuts getting through to local people. And I think that's important to point out. So, praise where praise is due. And if you're not able to defend yourself, I thought it was only fair, I just said that. However, I want to be fair in all regards. And I sometimes wonder if we take seriously in this ward the existential crisis of change that is actually happening. I think sometimes we look at the piecemeal changes, the things that we can change in our roads, maybe some areas with certain developments that are changing, the people coming into our ward. But as Sam rightly stated, we are going through a massive change, one that's been known about since 1999. And yet, it seems to be that the infrastructure spending is just not there, and it is going to have a massive impact on everyone here. Now, with regards to the party which is most represented here, it's the Liberal Democrat, our councillors before us, I think it would be healthy to have a person from another party or from an independent group, but I think the Labour party would be the best, who would be able to be the competition in discussion. It's been noted by residents, this comes from them directly, that many of our local councillors are campaigning in other wards this time round, because potentially, they take a safe seat vote for granted. Not true of all councillors, but it is with some. Now, if I was elected as your councillor, I'd be completely focused on Queeneydies. That's why I'm here this year and last year. And if I'm not successful, I'm sure I'll be here again next year as well, because I genuinely do care about the community here. I met my wife in this ward. I lived here for some time. I've spoken to many of you on the doorstep. I hear what you tell me about the issues and concerns. And I want to be part of that discussion in the future to represent you. So, one of my key priorities, what I would do to address some issues here, I would make sure that I would help local businesses and individuals to assess their carbon footprint and to come up with strategies and to signpost into agencies to reduce their carbon load. I would make sure I also signpost residents to insulate their housing, which seems to be a massive problem in this ward of the buildings. I would also bring stakeholders together. I've already spoken to Daniel Saishna, our MP in Cambridge, and I also want to talk to other stakeholders involved in Biomedical Campus to see how the city and the Biomedical Campus can then talk to residents about the changes and also to try and justify sometimes why things haven't been done. I also want to have a holistic plan for transport. It seems to me that sometimes we have a piecemeal change which pushes the problem to another street. And so, last year, I've talked to some streets about their parking problems. This year, I've talked to different streets about the parking problems, as the problem has merely shifted from one place to the other. And finally, I just want to reiterate this point, that I will be completely a Queeneydies councillor, representing your voice in the chamber. I think because Labour doesn't have any councillors here, it's always hard for local members to make sure they stand up and say what's going on in Cambridge group. And I think it'd be really important in a Labour council to have the Labour voice for this area so that things can really start moving, because that free market of ideas would be much healthier for democracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. And also to Manus, Sam and George. Right, we can have a few minutes break. There's a toilet just outside the back if anybody desperately needs it. We've got some soft drinks over there. This is a biscuit, so please help yourself. Maybe we can start again at 20 past. There's a clock at the back. About 10 minutes, and we'll have a couple of questions. If you've got specific questions you want... So, I'm really going to ask for prompt answers. Actually, if someone wants to sit up and go, yes, sit down, that's great. Good for being well vocalised. I'm going to try to group some of these together. So, if your question, if you think this probably hinted my question in there, something like that's probably what's happened. The first one I want to do is to look at development. The question here was, what commitment will you make to protect the residential character of Queeneydies? To protect its verges, trees and hedges and facilities? Someone else also asked about developments of shops, developing what we've got, and also on the Biomedical campus site, where there are precious few shops really available or planned for local residents to use, that's for sure. And also, it was a bit sustainable growth has been mentioned. So, I think we can, if any of you want to expand on those slightly, that would be brilliant. Does that make sense? Talk about community, sustainable growth, and shops and other facilities?
I'll go first.
Do you want this one? This is definitely... This is going to be working fine.
Yeah, sure. Right, development shops are area generally. Well, the first thing that really irks me is when I see big back gardens being developed and houses being put into them. There's no kind of planned-up thinking at all as to what happened to the traffic. So, I'd oppose any of those developments in back gardens firstly. I think that's a really big issue in this ward. With regards to shops, now, there's a very important area we have, Woolston Way, which I wish was used more and became more of a community-focused area. I think it'd be great to have more advertising of the shops that are there currently. They provide a great service. But I also think it could do with more money. I'd like to have it done up a bit more. Some of those shops now are a little bit tatty. I think it'd be great to have more money put into that area. I also think Nine Wells has virtually nothing. So, if you live in that area, you have to walk across to Adderbrooks to use the M&amp;S or whatever other shops are available in the Biomedical Campus. And I think that's a real problem. I think that quite often, the developers get away with putting a massive amount of excess, extra sketch, housing at the lowest cost, the biggest profit. Thank you, Anthony, for that quote. And they don't really think about the community. And I think that's the thing we must focus on, is trying to bring shops into those areas. Now, how we do that, I mean, well, so far, it's quite simple to say. How we do that's not so easy. So, I think it's regards to trying to reduce rates for local businesses, trying to help them into the area, and at the same time, putting pressure on developers to actually uphold their side of the bargain, which they very rarely do. That's not just regards to shops, also school places and community services. And that's why we want to be a strong voice against those developers and working with them. Thank you.
To retain residential characters. Last year, we had this issue in Queeneydies Way. Many of you may know. I fought very hard. There was a signature campaign to retain the cherry trees, which is typically the residential characters of Queeneydies Way for many years. There was a plan by Liddon councillor to cut those cherry trees and build Cyclopark. And not me, the residents opposed it. There were more than 450 signatures. Finally, it was stopped. So, I strongly believe that we should retain residential characters in some parts of Queeneydies. And also, the development. I'm campaigning for low-cost housing, but not in green fields. Must be developed in brown fields, where you can have sustainable development. And also, regarding the Biomedical Campus, I know a lot of buildings are coming up, but I think it has been done very meticulously. There was planning permission approved, and in the long run, it will help us. And I don't think Nine Wells is going to be affected much with the growth of Biomedical Campus, considering the benefits we have to have this Biomedical Campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. George?
We're blessed to have a few shops in Woolston Way, but by the moment, we have enough. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to persuade the developers to build resources to serve the community. We have, though, a huge opportunity as city councillors and as community, provided, you all agree with me, we can do what we call supplementary planning documents. And in that document, you establish an ambition of the new development. And that, you can decide on the density, on the layout, on the structure, the open spaces, how many shops you want, what facilities for the children you want. We have the GB1 and GB2, which are like a blank canvas. And we, as your councillors, can facilitate for the supplementary planning document to take place. We cannot do it for you. You need to want to do it. And that will generate clearly a wonderful area, additional shops. Queeneydies is a high resort after area. And unfortunately, I have a business, and I know that the rates are very prohibitive, are very expensive. So, any small shop who comes and says shop here, they pay an enormous amount of money. So, we need to also try to discourage the city council for imposing high levying for all the small businesses from Canada to set up shop here. I was disappointed. I was part of the planning committee when the Nine Wells development came before us. And I asked the question, what would you do if you were a bottle of milk? You're going to walk to the Adderbrooks all the way to Woolston Way. And the planners, and the planning committee said, well, it's not our problem. Before us, we have a planning, you pass it, you fail it based on the planning conditions. You don't worry about shops, you don't worry about the roads. It's a BES problem. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, so I think George just actually introduced a really welcome name of realism into the conversation, because, you know, this is one city councillor, and planning policy is set at national level. So, I'm not going to persuade anybody in this room, at least for myself, that I can work miracles in a planning context, because it's just not possible. And I have personal experience of trying and failing. I mean, I've worked with Colin McGurty to try and manage the impact of development of one of the houses on 292, on the neighbours. And I don't think we got a great outcome. And God knows, we gave it our best shot. So, you know, it's really, really hard. The things we can do, however, particularly in relation to the new builds, I keep saying this, there are good examples elsewhere. So, Malmall Lane Co-Housing in the north of the city, it's great development, getting all kinds of product, both for its build quality and also for the quality of the community that it is engendering there. Even more so, there's one outside Norwich, Carrow Brook Meadow. It has 43% affordable housing. The houses are built to passive house standards, which is the highest standard you can possibly get to for sustainability and environmental performance. Those are the kinds of targets I'd be looking for us to invoke for GB1 and GB2. In terms of the shops, I can't remember which of my leaflets it's in, but I'm sure it's in one of them. Absolutely, Woolston Way needs some TLC, because that ought to be the heart of our community. When I was first involved with Nine Wells, I was asked by Hill to look over some of their marketing material that there is in the ground to potential purchasers. And it had a map of local facilities. And I looked at the map, and I went back to them and said, you're missing the Woolston Way shops. And the answer I got was, hmm, they don't really fit with our brand. They're not really very aspirational. Well, they downright should be. And the city council owns those units. And the city council has invested in Arbridge Court, because it recognises that it can make a return on doing up the units that it owns. So, please, can we have a second Woolston Way? And finally, issues... Okay, no, finally, I'm done.
Thank you. Thanks to all four candidates on that one. Okay, again, I think if we do quickly, we can do two more questions. And this is another combination of one. One of the questions is, which has already been addressed by a couple of candidates, but I think it's... but I think is worth repeating and adding to. In what ways would your membership of a political party influence what you would do as a councillor or for Sam, what are the advantages of not being affiliated? And are there issues you think that are inappropriate or too big to be covered by the council? Would you support such as climate change? Would you support a citizens' assembly initiative within Cambridge to sort that issue like that out? And we'll start it with Dan.
Right, with regards to being a member of a political party, I understand the elephant in the group is that, of course, this is probably one of the big issues in this particular election locally. And I'm very proud to be standing for my party, the Labor Party. I understand fully, if I was standing here as an independent, I probably wouldn't get very far. But I'm standing here because of what my city council, your city council, has already delivered. And I think it's success into the future. Now, the way that parties work, I'll let you into my experience being the Labor Party. It's made up of many different members who are from all sorts of backgrounds. And anyone can get selected by going forward for selection. When it comes to decision making, it's made in a group in the city. And that's made up of voices from all over Cambridge. And I think that's the thing, it's a holistic approach to the whole city. It means that we can try to work with other parts of the county. We can also work with local residents in all parts of the city so we get fair representation. And that means we can then have a strategy to help the whole city. And in terms of running the council now for five years, it's achieved some incredible things. And in fact, we've delivered over 500 new council homes and invested over 700,000 to fight homelessness in our city. These are really serious issues and will have a knock on effect for generations to come. And that's why I'm proud to be the party that I am. About citizens' assemblies, I think they're a fantastic idea. And any way that we can engage democracy locally to try to get people involved, particularly with the environmental crisis we face at the moment, I think it's a good thing. I think we're at the moment looking at awareness building and we're far too far behind where we should be with regards to the environmental issue. I think that a citizens' assembly would be a very good idea because at least then you can get people involved to find out about the issues and then have their say. And then that way you can find solutions which everyone is a stakeholder in.
Thanks very much. George?
Well, as I said earlier on, it's, if you're a member of a party, you have a joined voice. If you're in council and there are 42 councillors, it's very difficult if you're alone to try and get your message across. We live in a democracy and we need a group of people to support your views. And usually, the majority gets their views through. In a political party, you get direction, you get support, you have different skills on the table and you share information. And sometimes, I can go to Arby and say, look guys, I'm having these issues here. What's happening in your ward, what's happening in other ward? And you share this information and you choose best practices for your own goals. And that's very, very helpful. As far as citizens' assembly is concerned, I fully support it. I also say it's a good thing. And we welcome decisions to be involved and informed on all aspects of our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manas.
First question, membership of a political party and the influence. Yes, I, you know, belong to Conservative Party. And, you know, recently, I was elected in the management committee of South Kensingtonshire. I'm very proud of the fact that I'm working for the party. Our party, we don't have a dictate that you have to go by a fixed rule. We are very flexible in our party. For example, when we had Brexit, you know, a lot of us, you know, decided to remain. And some of them also were campaigning very hard, you know, for Brexit. So we don't have any dictate from the party. And we have, we take decisions together. We sit together in the management committee and also with executive committee to take decision. And I can only talk about myself. I try to fight for residents' voices. And that is the reason I'm here. So sometimes I feel if party's guidelines don't match, I might tweak a little bit to, you know, listen to the constituents, which is very important to me. Regarding the climate, citizens' assembly, I agree with other speakers, there should be citizens' assembly. And that will be more changes in the environment. Regarding the climate change, I believe, you know, I can talk about Queen Edith and Cambridge City. We have too much, you know, traffic and, you know, there's hardly any room to move. I think we need to change that to, you know, contribute towards climate change. And one of the ways, more cycles, less buses and less motor cars on the road. And also, the metro system, which is underground metro, that will reduce traffic significantly and will contribute to an extent and change the climate in Cambridge City. Thank you very much.
You must have a question, I guess. All right, I'll just, I'll answer the bits I've noted down. If I've missed anything, you can tell me. Well, clearly, I don't feel that membership of a party is a particularly attractive proposition for me at this moment in time. My dad always said that I should vote for the person, not the party. And I think that's what I've done throughout my adult life. I think I can say I voted at one point or another, in one election or another, for members of all four parties. And I've been asked to stand by parties in Queen Edith's before. It doesn't feel right to me. So, there we are, that's my decision. I've looked at parish councils, for an example. Parish councils are very political and that feels to me right at that level of government. Dan's alluded to how useful it would be to have a Labor councillor in the ward with a Labor city council. I can remember hearing other councillors say things like that and various other things in the past, but it always feels slightly tacky to me. I don't know why, sorry Dan, that's probably not a very diplomatic choice of words. I can see where you're coming from with it, but it doesn't, it doesn't sit very easily with me. And in terms of citizens' assembly, interestingly, I went to a talk at Royal Society of Arts on the subject with an author who's just published kind of the definitive work on the subject. They are not to be done amateurishly. If you want them to work, you have to be scrupulous. So, yes, fine, if we're willing to put the work into setting it up to meet that threshold. Was that everything?
That's fantastic, thank you. Thank you very much for your answers on those points. I'd like to apologize if your question didn't get done. I think we managed to merge about a third to half of the questions there into sort of a bit of a mishmash. I do want to give people a chance to do, you know, a minute or two each as a closing statement. So I think we'll go to that now if that's okay with everyone.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
That you could collate those questions and forward them to us? And who could?
Yeah, okay, I will do that. I'll send all the questions that are submitted around to the candidates. And if you want to have next statements or anything of them and answer them, that'd be great. And we'll put them on the community forum website. Thank you, that's a very good idea. So our closing statements, I'm going to do this and you'll probably regret it. Oh, no, this is a different one. We'll start with Manas, if that's okay.
The question is, I guess, what message would you like? We have to take away, what message would you like? And it's in the event, if you want to see a permanent solution to your party problem, I'm the man, vote for me. If you want to develop, if you want to develop young entrepreneurs in the community, if you want to see your children go to school tomorrow, they will go to university. And if you want to see more young entrepreneurs, nobody understands better than me here. Vote for me. If you want to keep houses safe from burglaries and white cats because we have a conservative police and crime commissioner, please vote for me. If you want to see local community centre in Queen Edith faster, please vote for me. If you want to save our children from potential drug peddlers, please vote for me. And the last but not the least, being a businessman, I will say a couple of lines. The reason small businesses are suffering in Cambridge City is mainly because of rates, which none of us talked about. It's not opportunity. If the business rates are significantly high and your turnover is not good enough to justify the rates and rents, no business will survive. So small businesses will not survive in Cambridge until the landlords renew the rents and also city council reduces the rates. And these two has to work together, otherwise business will not survive. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Manas. Next up, our closing statement, and Sam Davis.
Okay, here's what I want. I want a Queen Edith which is open, connected, sustainable and obviously independent. Here's what I can offer you. I can offer you communication both ways, from me to you, telling you what I know and who I'm talking to and getting your views back and incorporating that in a virtuous circle. I can offer you attention to detail. I can offer you stats and facts and things that will help you make sense of what's going on around you. And I can offer you a very firm commitment to evidence based policymaking. And here's what I'm requesting from you. There's probably, what, 60, 70 people in the room? That's one hundredth of the registered electorate in Queen Edith. If you like what I'm saying, go away, tell 10 people about me and ask those 10 people to tell another 10 people and that way I can get the world round. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Davis. Final words from George Pindus.
I came to Cambridge 42 years ago. I've been living in Queen Edith since then. Cambridge has welcomed me, has given me good education to me, my children. It has given me a good home and a good, and a good job. The best way for me to say thank you to the city and to yourselves for the hospitality that was extended to me is to serve you as your councillor. If I were to be re-elected, I would use my vast experience and passion from my ward to carry on working towards making Queen Edith one of the best places to live in. I live and work in the heart of Queen Edith's community. It has always been my priority to make my ward a safer, cleaner and a fairer place to live in. I work in the hospitality industry and I care most about people. I am compassionate and I believe all our people should be treated equally and fairly. I would also like to think of myself as a pair of safe hands. I don't say too many words, but I get the job done. Please honor me with your role in the second amendment to carry on working for you and looking after your interests. Just remember, we're here all year round serving you. And I am here for you 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And my house outside says Elspeth Lodge. So everybody can get hold of me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. George Pindus. And last but certainly not least, Dan Reeve.
Well, I'm just going to hold the microphone in my also safe pair of hands. This is an interesting election because I think really for the first time, a long time, you have a potential to really have change in this ward. In the last 25 years, bar one, you've always elected a Liberal Democrat. So incredibly lucky to always have such spectacular candidates for that party. But maybe some of you don't agree with this or like it. But I'm very proud to be standing for my party, the Labor Party. And I'm also the individual, I think, who's able to deliver the best for this area as well. So, this firstly, it's a local election, not a national one. It's about the local streets you live on, the communities you're a part of, your schools, your communities. It's about trying to make sure that we have a more harmonious community. And that's why transport, housing, working with the community against crime, all areas I want to focus on, to bring real energy into the ward to fight against those things and to help develop the community. And look after, as I said earlier on, that lady in particular who is lonely. There's a lot of that in this ward right now. And I'm passionate and dedicated to try to do something to help. So I ask you a vote for Labor. Dan Reeve, one second, May. Thank you.